Say we get started. Start with our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, oh my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just need a motion to approve the agendas presented. So I've got a motion by Bo, seconded by Kelly, all in favor. Seven oh Amy. And then I just need a motion for the consent agenda. And if you needed abstain from anything, now it's time to do so. If you've got any questions, now it's time to pull it out to get them answered.
I did have a question on conflict of interest disclosure policy that came out. I didn't know if we needed to pull that out of the consent agenda. It's kind of in the gratuity section, gifting gratuity section, it talks about a board established amount. So I don't know if we've ever done that before.
You want to move it down to new business? We make a motion to do that?
Probably should because it'll be there and won't have anything to set it as a standard. So I'll make the motion to pull that out and move that into new business.
Got a motion by Bo to pull D out.
That should just take a second.
Anything else?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So we've got a motion by Bo, seconded by Derek, all in favor. Seven oh Amy. Moving on, now we've got to reorganize. Okay, brothers, your election results, the certified election results.
Amy's got those.
I'll read the election results that we have. For school board, Bo Helms, 368. Bill Feltrop, 430. Neil Allison, 177. And we're being listened to. Bond issue, 381. No, 301. And we have 57.42 plus point 14 to pass. So with the levy increase, we had 467 and we had 05 and it passed.
Okay. What's that? I just thank the community for stepping up and getting that passed. We can pay our teachers what they need to be paid. I think that's a huge statement from our community. Okay, we're behind you, so I think it's awesome. I mean, I'm sure everybody would like to see both of them pass, but got to take a little bitter with this week, I guess, as I say. So thank you. Moving on, now we've got a presentation for our outgoing board member, Ashley Kreether. Misses, thank you for serving. You've done a great job. I hate to see you go. So you can come back.
I'm gonna go back. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. You're killing me.
All right, so Ashley's been on this for four years, which is hard to believe. Four years. It just seemed like she got down here to the end of the table like maybe a year or two ago. It was kind of in the middle of the pandemic, wasn't it? So she came in at a really good time to be on the Board of Education. Nothing really going on, no difficult problems, nothing really happening. So I just appreciated that we had, there was a time when I can remember Clint, Bo, Carla Pettigrew, and Patsy, and some of them going, who are we going to get to run for board? Nobody's signing up. And it was about these kind of times. And so they started beating the bushes and trying to find somebody to come in. And I thought, well, who's Ashley Kreether? How do you spell Kreether? That'd be really a good place to start. I think we even misspelled it on the calendar once. So, you know, that's my fault because I was E before I had before E could figure it out. But I've always appreciated that Ashley was always a good listener, always had good input. A lot of difficult conversations going back to 2021 to the present. And, you know, you can't get anything done if you don't have good members of the community to step up and work on your Board of Education and provide input and be that representative body of what's going on in the community and what we need to know. So I just appreciated her insights. I appreciated the fact she served the whole time through. And we begged her a little bit to maybe go ahead and run again, but we had plenty of people running, so maybe it's a possible seat now. So you don't have to, you don't have to bag anymore. So people actually want to hear, Ashley, thank you for this.
Thank you.
And we'll put that check in the mail and we'll make sure that check gets issued for all of our.
All right, now we need our new board members to come forward. Bo, we have to get you back in again. You have to say the oath of oath of office yet.
Yeah, you should. Should. Yeah. Hold up. Do we need to do that now?
Yeah. You probably should go ahead and accept the election results, right? Didn't they vote to accept their election?
That's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should probably do that.
Yeah, I make the motion to, I make the motion to accept the election results as read by Amy.
So we've got a motion by Bo, seconded by Derek, all in favor. Be six oh this time.
Good catch, Kelly.
So now moving on. Now we've got the new, well, one new, one return.
Okay.
Bo and Derek, right?
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri. And that I will faithfully and impartially start discharge the duties of school directors in and within the Kentucky Department of Education. County of Monmouth, State of Missouri, the best of my ability for reporting for all. At the meeting, I will leave here.
All right. Welcome aboard, Brandt.
Thank you, sir.
Bo, you're back again.
Yep.
Bo is going for longest-serving board member, going on his year 10, starting with next year. That's a big check we're gonna have to write you, Bo.
How much is zero plus zero?
A lot of zeros, that's all I'm gonna say. Here we go. So we need to elect our board officers. So here we go. I need nominations for president, board president.
Three line people.
What did you say?
Nominations for board president. A nomination, a second.
I nominate Bo Helms.
I have one nomination for Bo Helms. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
So we got, by Derek, seconded by Brandt.
Are there any other nominations for board president? Seeing none. One wants going twice, goes three times. All those in favor of Bo Helms as board president, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Six oh or seven oh. Do you vote for yourself on that?
I don't, I'm not voting for myself.
Okay, there you go. Six oh. It's okay. All right. Nominations for vice president.
I nominate Derek Tuttle.
Derek Tuttle. Do we have a second for Derek Tuttle?
I have a second.
You have a second. Any other nominations for board vice president? Hearing none. All those in favor of Derek Tuttle as board vice president, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Pass, six oh. Board secretary. Nominations for board secretary.
I'll nominate Amy Silver.
Amy Silver nominated for board secretary. Any other nominations? Or, sorry, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Derek Tuttle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Six oh. Treasurer.
I'll nominate Lisa Bixler.
Nominating Lisa Bixler, do I have a second?
Second. I'll be third then.
Second and third. Just take everybody's vote by willful. All those in favor, Lisa Bixler, board treasurer.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, six oh. Delegate, MSBA delegate. Now, I know a lot of people avoid this one, but it's actually good. Brandon, aren't you our MSBA delegate? You want to share anything about that before we all say we don't want to do it?
I remember I volunteered last year because I didn't have a football player last year. So, but no, it was a very interesting event. I actually saw Brandt there, talked to him quite a while. But, I mean, I would encourage anybody to do it. I prefer not to do it again. I think everybody should take turn. So.
When was that conference?
October. It's like a Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I only went Friday, so.
Lot of good sessions, a lot of interaction with other board members. We put you up in a hotel, get to see the big city, it's still in Kansas City. They got away from the lake. I know, a lot of people have done that. We had a lot of shift to go to mayor, which is still at the lake.
You don't have to send anybody, do you?
We don't have to send anybody, but there's somebody that wants to go. It's always a good connection with MSBA, which is also going to do your process for choosing the next superintendent as well.
You don't have.
What's that?
You don't have.
Yeah, I didn't.
No, you don't have to say.
You go down to the day on your own.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can choose the day you go. Any?
I'll go.
Good. Kelly Kohler, have a second for Kelly?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I want you to have a chance to back out.
Six oh, that's right, I was doing it quick. Good. All right, Kelly Kohler. And an alternate. Alternate. Anybody like to be the alternate on that? If Kelly can't go?
I can do that.
Can you do that?
Yeah.
Kelly's sitting over.
Okay. Bo Helms. And second for Bo?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Six oh. All right, I think that's all of them. We got it. Back to you, boss. New boss. You guys want to switch seats?
Your turn.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll be, we'll be fine this way. All right. Okay, so we'll move into reports. You're up, Dr. Rob.
I'm up. All right. Attended the West Central massive meeting today at UCM. Little bit of a legislative update out there as well. I'm gonna mix it in there with what came out on Monday. Open enrollment has passed the House, it's now in the Senate. This is the third, fourth, fifth time it's been over there. Seems like it's got a lot of momentum. Governor Quixote wants this on his desk, is the word around Jefferson City, under that whole school choice banner. We have a resolution that we passed as a Board of Education against open enrollment. That's been a few years ago. And we stand with 255 schools out of the 518 that are saying we would not like to see this passed. That represents about 455,000 students in the state out of 879,000 in the state. I figured somebody might ask me. I said, you know, I need to look that up. It's close to a million, but basically about half the school districts in the state are saying that they're opposed to open enrollment and some of the things it'll do. Some of the versions of that bill would basically make about 3% of our student body up for grabs every year. 3% would be about 18 kids times that by about 7,000. So you're looking around, close to $140,000 swing if we would lose that number of kids and say a bunch would want to go to Versailles or would want to go to California instead. But we might bring some in, you never know. You don't know how that ebb and flow is gonna work. One phrase that I did hear a while back is everybody thinks, if they're for open enrollment, they think, well, it won't hurt me or it won't hurt my district. But you really don't know until it's implemented. And it kind of puts us in that whole competitive business model of can we draw kids or can't we? And what choices do families have in the area? And what are they gonna want for their kids? It was one of the reasons why the multipurpose building was important, because you want to have good activities, you want them to be supported in your community. You don't want to be seen as a small, small school that can't support kids, the activities, co-curriculars, extracurriculars go hand in hand with the academics that go on in the classroom. So you want to have good services you offer. Funding. This one's been interesting since March. You know, we, at one point, we knew the governor was out there pretty actively saying, hey, we're gonna freeze the state adequacy target, we're not going to fully fund the foundation formula, and I don't care what anybody says. He had a little speech in the state of the state. That went through the House side, and that has come out of the House now. And they are siding with the governor, and they are not raising the state adequacy target. They're keeping it right where it is. That messes with our budget math a lot. And that's recent. That's just this, end of this past week. So the House doesn't support it in their budget. I called our senator, Mike Burnscooter, I'm gonna say his name wrong, and Willard Haley, who's on the House side, letting them both know that it should be fully funding the foundation formula. This figures into how we're trying to do business and not trying to charge our local taxpayers every bit of the gap that we need to make up to meet the new salary mandates. We've passed our levy, and I let them know that. And from Mike on the Senate side, he said, he called Amy today. And Amy, what did our senator say?
He said that the Senate was behind fully funding the formula.
Which is good news.
And he did not know what the House representatives do.
Yep. So they're gonna fight it out a little bit on if they're gonna actually honor the foundation formula, it's been around for about 20 years, and actually fully fund it. So we're gonna watch that, and by mid-May, we should know, by about May 9th usually. They're gonna have to have that up to the governor, and then he has till about June 30th to actually decide if he's gonna sign it or not. So not funding or fully funding the foundation formula hurts us to the tune of about $200,000 that we thought we would be budgeting for next year. It's about $400 more per child, ADA, average daily attendance. So this is an important few words we need to be saying if we're gonna call, and I've asked the teachers to do some calling, even put a little video, because I was kind of fired up about it. So I said, hey, watch this little video to explain it to you. They should be, our legislators, be fully funding the foundation formula. They should be meeting their commitment to especially the rural districts, which really kind of rely on that state funding formula. And, you know, as soon as it started to benefit us, they wanted to put the brakes on. Well, it'd been frozen for a long time. And I even told our senator, I said, look, I said, you can't keep putting these mandates on us. He said, I agree. He said, I think over here on the Senate, we're gonna do that, I'm gonna check. And then while I was gone to my meeting, he called Amy to follow up. So I appreciated him doing that. But that, that may come out on our side, we'll see. So that's good news to hear, at least one of the Houses and the General Assembly wants to, wants to work with us, so.
I do have a question. You said that the difference in being fully funded and the impact of this would be $200,000?
Yes.
What, what amount were you using to figure that difference?
It's about $400 per kid, so it's 500 kids, $400 per 580.
$400 difference.
Mm-hmm, per kid, roughly.
That's what they're, oh, did they give us an amount that they're looking?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I think that was where, yeah.
Yeah, it comes out in the bulletin every year.
Yeah.
On what it's supposed to be. That state amount, or what it's supposed to go up to, has been out there for a couple years now. In fact, even up until March, Desi had put, I got it right here in my folder, the finance memo, and said, this is what it's supposed to go to. In fact, everybody's been figuring their budget going into next year, thinking, well, you know, if we can get a little bit of a levy increase, and we know that SAT is going up, then we should be fine. And that's why you asked for 50 cents, that's why we asked for 50 cents, we didn't ask for a dollar or something crazy. And you're doing your budget math, and you're going, okay, everything's going along, this is gonna happen. And then you get Governor Quixote do the state of the state and say he's not gonna do it. And that's what we saw at the, the public forum over there. I showed that video, so if you, those of you that were there, I think Dave liked that video with Governor Quixote, didn't he? He did not.
I did not like him.
But, but anyway, that's, that's the, the math that we get to play every year is more and more, especially through the pandemic, of just knowing, what are they going to do? It's why the first time we ran the levy, we say up to a dollar, because we really don't know what they're gonna do. Are they gonna fully fund the foundation formula or not? And so this, this is the position we're in. But if you guys want to go into more depth with that, I did prepare just to kind of looking through where our budget is right now, if you wanted to look at more depth of that, when you're kind of making some decisions on the new business. But that's important, and, and it's been the talk of every meeting I've gone to and every webinar that I've sat in with our lobbyists, our state lobbyists. And, you know, it remains to be seen how that comes out and how they reconcile between the House and the Senate and what the governor does, whether he signs it or sends it back or makes him go to another session or said, no, that's just too much, because in his mind, you know, he's a, he prides himself on being a private school kid and that his mom, single mom, put him through private school, and he's very proud of that, and he's trying to push $50 million toward private entities. And I've heard a good phrase from mayor, they said, public money belongs in public schools. Why are we, why are we doing this? So it's a little bit of a push-pull going on up there, and it's under that banner of school choice.
Is it 60, 67, 50? Is that the new rate?
67, 60 is our current rate. It's going up to 73, 45 or 73, 15.
Was it 6300 before?
It was 63, 15 or something like that.
They never fully funded that either, did they?
No. I mean, sometimes they did, sometimes they didn't. Well, this year, this year, was that 67, 60? They only told us last month that they were actually gonna fully fund it. So we've been limping along through this year at about 6,600, 6,650. And then finally, they did what they call supplemental. They said, we, we guessed short on lottery proceeds, so look, we're fully funding the foundation formula. And they put out that proclamation, I sent that to you guys so you could see it, that they were all grandstanding a little bit, like, hey, look what we did, you know? Well, yeah, that's just the current fiscal year, what you promised us way back last year, that you're actually following through with what you said you were gonna do. This is the fun with school budgeting, is that they tell you a number, and then however the economy goes, then they decide whether they can fully fund it or not. And you'll even see Desi periodically, and like they did this year, shortchange you a little bit all year, until they get to the point and say, hey, we're short a couple hundred million, what are you gonna do, state legislator? And then they pride themselves and say, well, we, we fully funded the foundation formula, we put another 75 million into this, you know, to make sure we followed through with our promise that we made way back at this time period last year.
It's going up to 73?
73. I'll tell you exactly what it is for that. 71, 45. But I do have some documents, if you guys want to look at it real fast, we could. But I did prepare them in case you want to get a little more in-depth on that. I told you, I sent you an email about a week or so ago showing you the new budgeting program that we have, that kind of gives us better forecasts earlier. And it's one of the reasons I spent the last month and a half learning it, is I didn't feel like, and a lot of superintendents felt this way, that we were using a spreadsheet that goes through the former superintendent at Republic Schools, and he does, he had probably had like 80, 85 different school districts that utilized that, and he maintained it really well. But there's better software out there, and I've got these tech guys and several districts are working with them now to create a online software that you can access anywhere, I can access it right here and pull up, and they get a very, very clean version of where our budget is, what's there, what's not, what's predicted, what's not. And there are a lot of predictions right now, because we're not at the point where we have the tax levy figured, we don't know our assessed valuation for next year, we won't set the tax levy till August, we haven't hired everyone yet that's gonna be on hire, we don't know exactly where they're gonna be on the salary schedule. So there's a lot of what-ifs, and I don't know what you all want to do with some facilities and maintenance, so they gotta push that into the budget as well, which Bob and I have been working on that piece as well. So there's a lot of flux that goes on this time of year. In fact, what had been kind of common practice for a lot of districts, including ours for a little bit, is to go and look at our current budget, what it is right now, and not knowing all of those things, we would run with the current budget and pass, because we have to pass the budget by June 30th, we would go ahead and pass that budget, which is much as we knew, and then go into next year, and we haven't even set the tax rate yet. We're gonna set it till August. It's backwards. If it seems backwards to you, it's because it is. It is. And nobody would do their home budget like this, you know, on predictions. But this is what we're left with, is what we have to predict. We also have to predict how many kids are coming in next year. You don't always know who's coming back, who's moving. I don't know. Ashley, you have anybody move in and out of the district? Just a little bit, see? So you don't know, is kindergarten gonna come in with 40 or they're gonna come in with 55? You know, we don't know. But things like kindergarten roundup and things like that do help us and give us an indication. I know Jason was here one year when the freshman class walked in, and that was the class that had 72 walk in the door. And we thought we were gonna have like 45, 50, you know? And all of a sudden, there's a little ground swell, you know? Where did all these kids come from? And it's not easy to predict. I've talked to a lot of superintendents around the state and bigger districts, they'll try to look at birth rates and gather other, and it's never an easy prediction. You're, you're just taking an estimate. So when you start seeing that surge go, that was a little bit alarming for us, because like, boy, if every class goes that direction, we're gonna be looking at a new elementary school and turning that into the junior high and high school down there and really start planning, because, but where are all the kids coming from? There's not any new subdivision being built or anything. So it didn't last, it kind of bubbled through, and then we kind of went back to about normal. So, there you go. Tipping's been fairly stable on number of students. Okay, questions for me?
Questions? Go to administrators. Is there anything, Ashley, Jason, is there anything you want to highlight from your reports?
One thing I didn't get to add on here because it happened yesterday was FBLA parlay team, one state championship, that's very good straight. State championship is a parlay team for FBLA, so that's pretty cool.
Yes.
Had that there. Happened yesterday, so it's posted on Facebook, so you probably saw it.
Dr. Rob, as you just mentioned, our kindergarten is coming tomorrow, and it's a large class that appears.
Is it 40-some?
Right now, we have like 34, 35 signed up for screening, but that's, there's usually others out there that you haven't found yet, so.
They'll show up next month.
Either we're doing a great job finding them in early childhood, or it's gonna be a big class.
And they're not even the COVID babies yet.
No, but I think San Antonio's gonna burn them too.
You said that out loud, but I was thinking not San Diego. Okay, does anyone have any questions for the administrators? I think then that brings us into old business. We've got a contract in front of us for superintendent search for MSBA from MSBA. I have looked at this contract, and it is dated for the 25, 26 year. There's not really any sort of time frames.
It's just the contract they sent to us, that had to be signed at this time?
There's nothing that we, we would need to necessarily commit to at this time. Like, you know, I don't know what the benefits of doing it would be at this time, other than to say that we've got something in place. And I don't know necessarily what the detriment of doing it either.
We talked, we're not gonna start search till in the fall, yeah, October.
John Downs did call me, guys, and emailed me, and I forwarded this to Craig at the time, just to give you a little, and they were asking for a signed contract to know they were on board to do your stuff. So I don't know what other conversations you may have had with them, but I'm just relaying that. They were asking for it.
I think, you know, I just think it's, it's up to the board, they wanna, if you want to go ahead and go under contract with them now or give it a couple months. I mean, I don't know enough about these contracts to think that the price would be, you know, something, they would rescind their offers somehow and try to renegotiate. I think it's just flat fees. At the, at least in the way it was presented when they came.
I'm not supposed to go in and accept your contract, cause it's, we gotta do it sooner or later and just be one thing off the plate. My vote.
What is it? I'm trying to weigh the overall benefit of having it versus just doing it internally. I understand their packaging, some stuff, they have some contacts, things like that. But if a position's posted, word of mouth goes a long way.
I think the biggest problem, I mean, that I have an interview team of some sort. Whether, whether that's two board members and the administrators or whoever that is, you know? I mean, I just think it.
Probably the screening service do, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I just think if we did it in the house, it's like a great big, like, if something does go south, you know? Which I don't think it ever would, I think anybody who's gonna be on it is gonna be responsible. I just think it, everybody here has a full-time job, you know, and it's just, well, some of us have a full-time job. Just beneficial to everybody though.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was just my thoughts of just making sure that it was gonna be beneficial to spend money on it. I see a lot of positives to it where they will, you know, do the, I mean, anyone can do a background check and things like that, but who's gonna do it? The onus would be on us to get that done, so I understand.
Personally, I think that, you know, you're, if you're out there recruiting, it would be helpful to have something like this out there. The only maybe reason to wait would be if we had somebody walk through the door, probably that we thought would be a great candidate, we would have saved the money otherwise. I don't know how that happens or the likelihood of that, but I mean, that would be the only downside, I think.
I mean, do we, can we post it on our website and say four twenty-five, twenty-six school year? And let it see what we can gather, you know, without cost? I mean, we've got our website, I don't know how many people look on it, but obviously we get somebody, cause we're, you know, hiring positions. Can we throw it out early and say, you know, four twenty-five, twenty-six year?
We have that capability. We have talent.
And see if we, you know, maybe we catch, like Brad said, maybe we catch somebody or you said, you know, walk through and see what it does in a month.
I wouldn't be opposed to that, that way it's out there and then.
That's why I asked you all the last meeting. It's exactly what I asked.
I wasn't paying attention.
Obviously not, but that's exactly what I asked. I don't remember that.
I mean, we tend to, had agreed on MSBA instead of mayor, seemed to be a, right? A better organization, but.
I think I remember, maybe I misunderstood, but I think just posting it out there. Like I, I full, I, I really do believe that we should use MSBA when we get to the point where we're active recruiting. You know, we're, we're in the fall and we're in the recruiting, um, realm, uh, timeline of trying to get somebody to bring in. I think we need to use a service for that. I just don't know why we need to sign on right now. That's, that's all I'm saying is we could go a couple of months and have that out there. Because I don't think it does us any good at this point. We're not hiring a super titted right now, I don't think, for twenty-twenty-six. You know what I mean?
I mean, they said that they wouldn't start till fall anyways, cause that's the fine season.
That was what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Decided June, decided July, whatever.
I, I have seen sometimes guys, they, they, uh, they will do like a preposting, both mayor and MSBA will, once they know that they have you guys locked in. They'll start putting it on the website, so it puts it in the mind of people who are wanting to move or thinking about coming here. So it already gets on the website for you. And, and superintendents check that stuff a lot. So it's, it's your, totally your preference, this is not my process, but I'm just kind of telling you what I've seen in the past. They, they start getting the word out. If you're looking for a wide swath of candidates that you want to look at. I know Kelly brought up, when they were here the last time, you wanted to see all the applications. You know, who, who do you want to manage that? I mean, if you develop on your own, your board secretary would probably be printing all the applications and everything for you. You'd have to have a process where you guys have some time to sit down and review those. It's, you're not having, you're gonna be left to vet them all yourself. So that's calling the, this is what they did to me when they brought me here. They, they called my boss, they called my references, they go through all those people. They generally know those school boards that those people are serving on and the one that I served on, they, they do have a lot of inside knowledge about candidates, both internal and external. They set up a fair process for you, so you're treating everybody equitably. And it, you know, it's your process, if you guys want to run it, it's all yours, you know, to, to decide. I'm just kind of telling you what they do for, for you. And either one of those groups can do a good job for you.
You guys think, you guys want to adopt this now or wait?
I say we adopt it now, that's my opinion.
It doesn't cost anymore to do it now or do it in the fall, so just be one thing off our plate. Got a motion?
I will, I make a motion, we adopt or we accept the MSBA contract for our super, next superintendent search.
Second.
All in favor? I think that's seven. All right, so moving on, we've got a discussion over teacher salary. Wanted to talk about the salary schedule again. I think, Dr. Rob has talked about some of the issues we're, we're dealing with with funding. We also have a levy that was passed as well to speak about, so, you know, we've got the schedule in front of us. What, how do you guys want to approach this at this point in time?
Yes, the one question I had is, was, um, the grant. If we move forward with salaries, can we still get the grant?
No, not with that recommended, no.
Is the grant?
Cause you'll be, you'll be forty or above then.
Okay, is the grant available this year?
Yes, as far as I know, it hasn't been passed yet, but it's in the House's version of legislation right now.
Throw a fifty-fifty dice, it could, could be there, could not.
I don't know, but go wander around those halls and see what people are telling you. So I got that update with the lobbyist every, every Monday. Sometimes they throw us in here. Well, I, I can give you guys a handout that I think would help you if you're wanting some help with this decision. And just kind of show you where you are budget-wise. So this new program does a lot of things we didn't have before. Do you guys want some more information?
I think it's imperative that we kind of listen, I wasn't on the board last meeting, but I listened to it, I was here. Though there was a lot of discussions about moving forward then, which I know Craig had voted, I believe, to move forward then. And everyone else said, let's let the community decide what they want to do. And the community decided to support the tax levy, so we need to support our teachers based on what the community did. If we would have done it last time, we would have been looking at, uh, the deficit's been for sure, uh, no matter what. This time, we, we at least know that we have the funding for the salary portion of it, uh, done. And the community responded to what we asked for. And I think we need to just listen to the community, support our teachers. Either way, the teachers need to be paid. I think we all agree with that. So that's, I just, that's, that's my thoughts on it, is I really feel like the community said, hey, yes, we really support this. And we want you to move forward with it, cause it was kind of stated, we would readdress this here in April and, you know, move forward with it. If it, if the community supported us, we take care of that. Now, whether there needs to be other adjustments past that to help with any potential budget deficits, uh, we can address that. But I mean, I think we've known about the budget, potential budget deficits since Mike Keough's speech in January. So we've already known that was lingering. So the only thing we do know for sure is that the tax levy passed for the teachers. So we need to take care of that part of this.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is a strange argument to say, we're gonna put this in, in front of, I mean, we're, we're gonna try to vote on this before a levy gets passed. And now the levy gets passed and then we're gonna try to pull back and not vote on it. Weird. Way to pull down that. Probably not the best way to word that, but. I, I think the, the only way for us to get the grant is if we do nothing, really.
Well, we can't do nothing.
Yeah, I mean.
We can't go ask her, like Brad said, we can't ask our constituents for this and not do nothing. You know?
So Dr. Rob, this gets us caught up, right? Your proposal, the thirty-eight, seven, thirty-two increase, correct?
Caught up, what do you mean?
Well, like you said before, we were three years, four years not given a raise, is that right?
Yes, so it'll get, it'll get those people who are at forty off that.
So next year in the spring, we would go back to the salary schedule steps over and down. That would be the increases that they would have.
It'd be at least $500 per.
Correct, and so what do you think estimated cost on, but you, you know, I mean.
On running it?
Yeah.
Well, if you have about fifty-five teachers times $500 a piece.
So thirty, forty, ten.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just asking that because, you know, we're hoping to generate 300,000, so it's still gonna cover that step and increase, well.
I really need to hand this to you guys, because you'll get a real clear picture, cause you're asking the kind of questions this answers.
Okay.
So, I mean, if you're not wanting to look at it, tell me, but I prepped it for you. Oh yeah, cause I prepped it for you, so you'll know, because I don't want you to go in blind. I want you to see it, because our, there's a lot of flux right now. And I'm gonna walk you through each sheet and it's easy to look at, because this new program helps you understand this. Instead of me just throwing numbers around, all of us trying to figure it out in our heads. Okay, so we talked about these limitations, kind of look through those. This is what we don't know right now. Did you get one of those? This is what you don't know right now. Okay, we haven't budgeted for facilities maintenance and Bob and I have been walking around, kind of picking up all those jobs. So there's something we need to think about. And I'm gonna give you a little homework and stay with me, Kelly, for a minute. Just stay on page one. We haven't approved salaries for our support staff, haven't considered any of that yet, so whatever you decide to do there. We don't know the, know the new assessed valuation from our three counties. Okay, that won't come until July, then we set the tax levy in August. We don't know what the budget will finally come out of the House and Senate for them to sign, so that's your SAT part. We're not sure about our enrollment. We are seeing a downward trend, which can affect our, our ADA and that funding through the formula. They appear to pass that open enrollment bill, we talked about that. That shouldn't affect us next year, I checked on that. It would not apply to twenty-five, twenty-six, but it could apply to the next years. And we haven't completed hiring everybody yet in the salary schedule. So those things are not known, that's where we're sitting right now. Flip the page, there's three scenarios here that I want you to look at. So if the levy passed, and it did, this is scenario one, so that's a good thing. We've got the fifty cents and we get full funding of this SAT. This is our best possible scenario. So the revenue line at the top, that's how much money we could predictably bring in, eight-point-three million, all right? Versus the expense at eight million, all right? So it's showing we're at the bottom line, three-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars to the good. Well, that sounds great, right? But that's the old salary schedule. And so if we think about our new salary schedule costing us about a quarter million, we're in the zone. Looks like we're still about a hundred thousand to the good. That's if state adequacy target comes through. That's the thing that's in flux right now. Everybody got that one? That's our best case scenario. You flip the next one. So we pass the levy and then it gets blue, it's frozen, all right? Your top line is the revenue, that's eight-point-one million. Your expense is the second line at eight million, so you're about a hundred-and-fifteen to the good. So let's just say it stays frozen, that, that could be pretty likely, or maybe we get a little bit, I didn't put that scenario in here. So there it is. We're using the old salary schedule again. So we spend about a quarter million, I just kind of rounded those numbers a little bit. So we're negative one-hundred-and-thirty-five deficit spending, knowing we're doing that. That's not terrible. That's not a terrible position to be in. We might find some ways to cut other places, we might have a few more kids walk in the door. There's a lot of things that could happen there, but we have deficit spent before, five-hundred thousand dollars, and it worked out just fine. Cause we didn't spend everything we thought we were gonna spend. So that's not a terrible position and this is, this is kind of probably where we are right now. Now flip it. This, we're no longer here. No levy, no full funding. And you can see how that number goes, it was negative one-seventy-eight without changing the salary schedule. If we had changed the salary schedule, we'd have been another quarter million down. Okay, so that, that explains it. So where, here's where we're estimating. There's twenty-four, twenty-five. You can see all those figures that go into where we're getting money. Now, what kind of keeps me up a little bit as I try to predict these numbers, and you go to ADA, which figures into our formula. Okay, twenty-four, twenty-five, we're predicted to be about five hundred, I went ahead and went with five hundred. Summer school was actually twenty-six-point-six last year. I'm gonna say we're gonna make twenty-five. There's our September membership, I'm gonna say we're gonna stay about the same. So if these are all about the same, these numbers stay about the same, then that's the prediction that we'll get about two-point-nine million in state revenue. There's a new calculation going in. Weighted average membership, which is, the formula's not on there, but it's a little more complicated, giving some peoples some fits, but we've got it right. Weighted average membership now, they're taking ten percent of your membership, just kids who are enrolled. And figuring it into the new weighted average daily attendance. So weighted average daily attendance also takes into account your special education. It takes your limited English proficiency kid, your free and reduced lunch count, all those things where the, the state will say you need more funding to be able to educate those students. Flip it one more time and you go with the estimate of our local levy. So our local levy, right now, this is this year's numbers. That's not next year's numbers, cause you're gonna set them in August. Right now, the state says we could levy to ninety-six. See that teacher one? That's the good one. See, it says point five, that's where that fifty cents is going and that's where we'll show the entire town, hey, you passed the levy, that's where it's going. We're paying people out of there. We still have to transfer money over for operating to be able to pay teachers, cause that's the fund we pay them out of. Our assessed valuation was right around fifty-nine, I fifty-eight, I don't have it in my head, but it's right at fifty-nine. I said we went up just a little bit and that's been pretty consistent. We have not really been going up a lot on our assessed valuation. So if we collect about ninety-eight percent of what we're supposed to, with the delinquent revenue, you can see what those revenues come out to. So that gives you an idea that a lot of what we do right now is predicted. And here's our current budget outlook, you can see it, flip it. I wouldn't count this as our final outcome for a fund balance for next year, this is twenty-five, twenty-six. Cause one, it's using the old salary schedule to give you these pie charts. And we don't have those financial pieces that are listed on page one figured out yet. The fund balance will go down with the passage of the new salary schedule. So you pass it right now, it'd go down about almost four percent from what this number says, based on the current numbers we know. Based on the current numbers we know. So the good thing is, is we have a nice, healthy fund balance. But as you walk through this, you realize that there's a lot of variables in here. If I'm not comfortable right now and I want to wait till June, then wait till June. If you want to go ahead and go with it, I think we'll be fine. I don't think we're gonna get below thirty percent. I think we'll be in the thirties. It's just, I don't know if we'll be below thirty-four or we'll be right around thirty-four going into next year.
And this doesn't count Fisher money, right?
No, it does not. It does not, I had to pull that out of there. Good point.
Excuse me?
Cause, yeah, cause it, that's, that's cordoned off money that you, you can't count, count and bill that. But there you go. And it also gives you a nice breakdown, which is easy to get to, to see where is your money actually going? Now, a lot of times people say, well, you know, in some districts, seventy percent goes to certified salaries. I think that's always interesting. And, and salaries in general, you look at your benefits, you add up the benefits, you add up, um, the non-certified salaries. And then don't forget, we have a lot of contracted services, so in larger districts, they're hiring their own people. So yeah, you can get to seventy percent of your budget very easily, it's chewed up by, um, benefits. That's health, health insurance, that's everyone else. So I try to make it real simple, I don't know if that helps or if that just confuses you. I tried to keep it real simple. So I try to make it real simple, I don't know if that helps, or if that just confuses you, I tried to keep it real simple, moving forward.
Can I ask you an open enrollment question?
Yes, sir.
So if if we have three percent of those children decide to go wherever, will we still collect that ADA on those kids and then have to pay tuition to where they go?
No, no, the kids that come to us, we would get the SAT, we can get the ADA on them.
So if they, sixteen kids go to for sales.
For sales, get some money.
I guess their Moses goes with them, so that for, that way they get their money.
Correct. And there are some caveats in those bills and talking about how a district would decide to accept or not participate, one or the other, and then there's a timeline, they talked about different times on on the where parents need to notify the home district, notify the district they wanna come to, there's an acceptance piece on whether you wanna take them or not. But those things are in flux right now and just exactly what they're gonna look like, and there's probably been, Kelly, four or five different versions that I've heard, and now they're all in a big swirl of what exactly are they.
Yeah, because our ADA may be quite a bit lower than California just cities today. So if they're gonna collect their data, or if we get their kids, I guess it's a wash then, I don't know, just it's interesting how that works.
Was there a question on that about transportation, who would be liable for transportation of those children?
That's kind of going back and forth as well, I haven't seen a definite on, we would be responsible or somebody else would be responsible, I've heard one where the parents are responsible to get them here, but then if they're students with special needs, we might be responsible, I don't think that's worked out yet. Yeah.
I have one other question, on the salary schedule, the option salary schedule, it's got the current schedule for this year, and it's got two categories to the far left. Oh, no, I don't see, so it's got sub-cert BS, sub-cert PAC, and then BS cert.
Yes.
When you go to the new recommended one?
They're gone.
Those are gone?
Yep.
So all teachers fall into that BS cert?
Correct.
Okay, that was just one of my questions.
That was a clarification that a lot of superintendents have asked about, and we pay them under, if if a person is occupying a teaching position, then you can count them as a teacher and you can pay them on your salary schedule as a teacher. The the key is that they need at least a sub-cert. And then are they serving as a history teacher? Are they serving as a PE teacher? Do you have them in the position, are you calling them a teacher, even if they're working on their certification? Doesn't matter, they'll count them as a teacher and you'll get, because what happens is there's an audit that gets done. Carrie, your wife, has to make sure all the teachers are tied to the hours, that kids are in front of a kit, kids are in front of a teacher, and that's how we get that money from the state to actually show that little Derek was in PE class with Mr. Pafford, and it was for this amount of time, and she's got everybody being counted and sending it up to Desi and turning that report in, it's a big deal, yeah. So we have to have them sub-certified, or they come back and give us a report and say, hey, these people aren't, don't have any kind of certification, they're not coming up, you can't claim these hours for ADA. So it's a fun report.
I just noticed that.
Yep.
How I'm forgetting, so I wanted to clarify this.
Yep.
One of my questions is, like, all these limitations, we didn't know about last month, but it was recommended for us to go ahead and approve it, so why are we wanting to wait? I mean, like, why are we recommending June now?
Well, you guys were the ones that tabled it last time. Correct, you did, and so in my mind, you were telling me you wanted all the information you could have, so you could make the best decision, so I gave you all that information so you knew.
I appreciate that, I just think most of us were wanting to see how the levy turned out, which is why we tabled it.
And that's fine. I haven't changed my opinion on whether you should approve it or not.
Now, the way I look at the schedule, I'm not sure there's really any in between, you know, I mean, there's no reason to, it's either move it up to this or do nothing. That's the only option. Unless I'm missing something.
No, we talked about a stipend, but that was to get everything to forty and give them
Yeah.
five hundred or a thousand dollar stipend, but you're still, you're still gaining, I mean, the teachers are gaining something, but they're not gaining what they're earning. That's why we waited on our vote.
Which we got.
We got, thank you.
All right, so we have, this is a discussion topic, so I think that obviously, we we could do a couple of different things, we can wait, or we can go ahead and seek a motion to approve the salary schedule, let's propose now.
I make a motion to approve the salary schedule now.
You have a motion by Brad?
She can have it.
All in favor? We got seven over.
I just think it's unfair to make the teachers wait till June whenever we know we got what we need.
Just out of curiosity, what, we got these limitations on this page?
Yeah.
So, what's our best plan to address these? Just food for thought, anyways, move on.
No, I mean, I think that you've got, obviously, the, we need to sit down and do another study session off facilities and the maintenance, I think Dr. Rob was working with Bob on some of the stuff. Kelly and I were talking the other day about some of the storage issues, we've got some of that stuff upside up there by the building, the old ag building. Mark Hampton, I shouldn't probably say that, but somebody made a recommendation that, you know, we gotta take a look at that again, see if there's, what sort of options, and I think that was a good recommendation.
Talk about container boxes.
Yeah, especially for the football storage.
The football storage issue is, that's really dangerous out there.
I asked a friend of mine about for sales with their surplus, and they just have an auctioneer come in on a Saturday morning from nine to eleven, and they sell it, and what sells, sells, and what doesn't, recycled or trash. Maybe something we need to.
We've got that old building up there is full.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, one that I went to for sales had kitchen equipment.
We have.
Desk and filing cabinets, and thirty percent of the stuff sold, and it didn't sell for much, but it did sell for something, and it.
It's gone.
They had a building at for sale, that's what they did, it was taking up ag space, and so they got rid of it, maybe we just.
Yeah, I swear, I saw a copy machine in there.
Probably.
Hey, Dr. Rob, we were talking the other day about that, who's gonna have some more summer help start working to clean that out, but I think.
What they for sales did, just pulled it outside, and if it's old, it's old, and if it didn't, off to Bobby Clutter, whoever collects junk, and the rins, and you may have to have a dumpster.
That would be a good first step, because I'm not sure how you could really assess the building from a structural integrity perspective.
And they, and Bob needs space up there, too. I mean, there may be some student desk that you don't wanna get rid of, but then there's computer carts from COVID that we're not using. A whole pile of weights. We don't need it there.
Actually, we're more limited on storage as it is.
Correct, and it just may take some manpower and getting some young kiddos up there, and I know Coach Duke's also about getting his kids to come, and if we can get them lined up talk to Chad Murphy or Steve Dubert or somebody and say, hey, would you come sell this, and you don't really have to make a list, the for sales just makes a list of surplus stuff, puts in the paper, it's nine o'clock. Sells or doesn't sell, and you go on, way to get rid of a lot of it, but you really need Bob there because there's things that doesn't need to be in the sale. It would sure help us base, and like the stuff around the back, too, it's just, somebody will buy it for junk, or they won't, or maybe just scrap it up and get rid of it. Then you may, say you make twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars, you can buy two container boxes if you still want to do that. But you're also gonna open up two thousand square foot of storage, decent storage, maybe it's not when.
That's one issue, I mean, that's one thing we could probably do, that's something we need to do anyway, it's kind of what I was saying.
I sent you the current facilities list, the current draft, I went through your email right now, I don't think you need to get into discussion yet, I think you need to look at it, take some time for the next meeting. There's some links there, there's some bids there, there's some estimates, Bob and I have been working on it. We do have several students that we'll put up on in May that have contacted Bob and I, and they're kind of those hefty boys that like to work. So they will be, that is one of the first things we're gonna do when school ends, is start pulling that stuff out. If you guys want to do what Kelly's suggestion, which is pull it all out and have an auctioneer there that day, that works fine for me, because it makes it easier.
If you're gonna do that, have a dumpster there that way you're not handling it twice.
Believe it or not, we filled two of those things up just a few years ago, and I don't know how it gets, keeps getting full, but it does. But, yeah, we can put that out there, and that's the direction Bob and I have talked about going, so, is to get it, and even the backside as well, which just seems to look like the other people in the neighborhoods jump, I think, is what's happening, it's not just ours, that's what Bob told me.
It would be good to know that a place is feasible, to have secure storage, and we can actually do it.
And eventually maybe have to do a little work to the building to help with the water on the backside to keep it out of the whole.
We've collapsed in one side of the building.
And it would just be gutters if you get the water away.
That would be the next step.
It might help clean off the stage, different areas, too, so we're freeing up space for practicality.
Nice, always get that one bag coming out for you after a real school.
Correct, I think on the west side, don't you think it's the dry zone again?
Probably.
Because he keeps it safer and stuff.
Other than having the ceiling done, but the actual water itself.
And that basically something too, Dr. Rob, 3MT can help you with, too.
Who's that?
3MT, whenever they're in town.
Yeah.
I don't know what their scheduled date is, you don't know?
It's the end of June. The end of June.
Definitely, if you wanna do some touch up or something.
Yeah.
You did have a couple of containers, you wanted to paint it, they could do that, or unload those old sheds into the building, or whatever, if you're willing.
Maybe we can look at that information and kind of push this off to the May meeting and kind of take into that.
And that's in progress, so I'm still working on it, Bob and I are still both working on that one.
All right, very good, we had a request for discussion about FBLA and the business teaching provision. Eric, you wanna talk about it?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to touch base on it. You know, like Jason said, I seen it on Facebook, you know, FBLA, for the third year in a row, their parlay team has won state. And that just kind of brought to my attention that the program is doing great. And my worry, and this might be more a question thrown out, are we gonna hurt, is FBLA gonna strive as well without, I did, you know, that dedicated teacher like Ms. Fisher was? You know, I wanna make sure, you know, now, and I'm not looking to keep throwing money at everything, but, you know, will FBLA be able to succeed as well without, you know, with a dedicated teacher? You know, I don't wanna see another program suffer.
Which classes do they work on FBLA stuff in, just the business classes?
Yeah, if you look at that, no, share it, Doc, the business classes that are listed there.
Like Tech one and Tech two, they're, so they get caution time to work on that with that, even if this went this direction, so. And you still get your computer app class?
Yeah. Look at schedule for business teacher this year.
So it's graphic arts when they work on journalism?
Yes, that's that's yearbook time.
Okay.
We did a stipend for that, yearbook stipend, is that right? Yeah, yeah. Yearbook has a stipend, and FBLA has a stipend. I think he's done a really good job with it, for sure. I'm just paranoid by chance, but he was obviously last year heavily involved with contests because Ms. Fisher was out for already looking for contest prep season. So he was involved with the kids last year, he stayed involved with them this year. Did their district contest, and he started forward, I think he did a great job with it, for sure. You know, I I think sometimes with one person doing yearbook and FBLA, I think that might have actually taken away from that. Both are big projects, so.
I will say, it did make me nervous, too, whenever we first had this discussion, but seeing the breakdown of it definitely makes me feel better, because we're keeping the classes up. That's what I was afraid of, they were gonna lose out on some of the classes that they could have been offered, so I will say it makes me feel a lot better seeing that.
Met with both, and, you know, both are definitely excited about the positions that they're gonna take on. Ms. Boland is really excited, she was at the NHS induction taking pictures, that package, she's really excited, you know, she's bringing new ideas that she's brought from other schools, and she's excited about it. I think it was just a opportunity with having Boland and brought both here, that we were able to do it, whether it lasts two years, one year, ten years, I definitely think giving them both more responsibility for both of those teachers is a good thing, because they're both good teachers, and they're both elite one. There's a what to do, nobody ever wants what to do, but they're both good people to lead, and they both do a good job at it.
Well, I wasn't cutting, you know, the two other teachers, I just was worried, you know, was it gonna spread too thin?
And from the outside looking in, you think, oh, you got rid of a person, how did you absorb it? Well, also, you don't publish, like, you know, the fact that both Porter Van, Boland, both had some classes that had extremely low numbers, so we were able to switch from a ten to a seven, which you didn't know what was gonna happen with numbers of classes, but whenever kids lost the opportunities to take as many electives, core classes stayed full, and some of the elective classes dried up, so it's kind of how we were able to cut with attrition.
Well, I think it's.
My last one year, my last five, my last ten, you don't know, it takes both of them to do it.
But when you've had a teacher here for twenty years and has done the job, it's just kind of racking, hearing somebody else taking it over, not saying, you guys won't do fantastic, I believe you will.
Even with a new person, you worry, like, what if it's not the same, even if you have one person doing all of it, it's like, well, that's big shoes to fill. So when you have somebody leaving that has had that much success and done such a good job with everything she's done, it's gonna be hard to fill her shoes, no matter who you are, whether, you know, you're doing three of, three of the six classes, or if you're doing all six of them, so.
Well, and they're still gonna get their life skills, that was the big concern.
Yeah, same here, yeah.
You know, that's a good life skills class, and majority of your kiddos that graduate are gonna go into some type of business, or crack of cards.
Both programs have a lot of good life skills, selling ads for your book or, you know, business side of things, which we've done with the teacher shop, so they're both very.
Will say them selling ads for your books, that is a struggle for some, when they walk in the bank, I'm like, use your words, let's hear your spiel, so.
Did Derek?
You get better.
Yeah, I just, I feel better.
Yeah, I do, too.
I just needed a little clarification.
And that helped, putting that schedule out there, so we could, you could tell us that they're gonna do it, it's like, oh, if they want a pin block.
You wouldn't have been able to.
So, thank you. Yes, thank you, again, need good clarification.
Dr. Rob, was that salary for that position, was that factored into these totals?
Salary, yes, it was not factored in, it had already been pulled out.
We ready to move to the new business? All right, so we've got a first reading of a whole bunch of policies. So I I think we'll come back next month and talk a little bit more about those if we need to, so. Everyone's okay, we'll move on to B, which is approval of bid to recoup the gym force.
That's Lubert, who's done it just about every, well, every year I've been here, and we need to get on his schedule to make sure, it's a yearly thing, sometimes it's an every-six-month thing, depending on how much, where, am I right on that, Jason, we've done it in December before, too.
We have, there's other schools that have, and lucky that we've had to, this year, gym teacher, like, better job to keep school day, which helps protect it, and third on, to stay on, it's slightly. When do we schedule this? When do we schedule to do this?
It's usually in the summer after we're away from it. Dead week is a good time.
I was gonna say, is there any way we can get in?
It's usually right. It's usually right before every grade. This year I talked to Lubert and I talked to Hannah. And he said, well, he said, I was asking some questions about the zoo. Because there's always a lot of tacky. Well, they don't have it's running on every day and on athletic shoes. But he's like, the zoo thing is, he said, volleyball wants it slick so they can slide around and don't get extractions. Basketball wants it tacky, so they do have traction. So after talking to him, he's actually looking at putting our elementary gym at one time, in our high schools, you have half the volleyball. So then you actually would have an extra portion of the year that would be tackier. Volleyball wouldn't be tackier. We have our break there in October where he said you come in and do it. Ready to go for that next Monday.
So just a couple of days off of it?
Yeah. Because water base, not oil base. The old oil base, you have to stay up for like ten days. Water base, he said, forty-eight hours. Have light traffic, light if you have a practice, but not full gym. It's like PE. But I mean, it is what it is. It's it's gotta be done. Right. So if it's two days or if it's ten days, it doesn't matter. You're not in the gym. Go to the city park. That's it. I mean, all right, I mean, that's just the way it is. It has to be done.
All right. We'll seek a motion.
I make a motion to accept Lubert's bid for sixty-three hundred to do both gym floors.
All right. Motion by Craig. We got a second.
Thank you.
On there. Seven oh, Amy.
I got a quick question. So recoup, just just put a new base on it. Isn't there something else like where we have to, where it's a more invasive? Uh, that's, yeah, we did that, what, three years ago? And we sand it down. Whenever you get a break in your gym floor, they recommend it within five years. We sand it the first time. So lacking with it. And after that, they recommend that the next time you have to sand it all the way down to the gym floor. Okay. So we're we're set on sanding it all the way down for I mean, they say fifteen, so realistically, probably twenty, you know, before you actually do it.
And we do have some periodic repairs, some board replacements that happen depending on how things wear. That's been pretty common over the years. I'm surprised we haven't had any this time, but they may, they may find a few that need to be replaced.
I was just curious. I don't know nothing about a basketball floor besides you run on it. They really, they really deep scrub it. They kind of buff it slash sand it a little bit and then they put a top coat on it.
Since we're talking about gyms, just a quick question on the scoreboards. Are you putting the old one in the elementary gym from high school?
The old ones right now scored up on the hill. I told Bob just to store it up there because of, not knowing what I'm thinking, Bob was gonna pass.
Sure.
We have two scoreboards. We're gonna put one in the building.
It'd be nice to see that one get put up in the elementary just so they don't have to use that tabletop.
Yeah. That old scoreboard is
I mean, the tabletop thing worked great for a year.
It did work good for a year because it was several thousand dollars to fix the one that's in the elementary gym.
Yeah.
So.
So that's in the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So we had moved letter D out of consent agenda. I will put that down in the new business on yes, C. So this is what, if you guys open that up on page two, there's a section called gifts and gratuities. And it said, it says that basically we're prohibited from accepting gifts or gratuities in excess of the amount established by the board, by the board. So the problem with the policy, obviously, is we don't have an amount established by the board. So I didn't know how you all wanted to handle that. What amount would be appropriate? Because I have no idea. I don't get any gifts. I don't get any gratuities. So that'd be what
And you don't have to
What's that?
When I do like the
We got sweatshirts the last two years.
Yeah.
Or Yeah, maybe. So I can tell you, we have this, I don't, I don't want to say the amount, but we have this policy at work. Can't accept more than but I would imagine we'd want to put like for that, just so that if anyone were to question that we got a sweatshirt. Fell below whatever amount.
But it wouldn't, like, if we had to go to the board training, that would not be any part of like a hotel room and
No.
Fifteen dollar meal request or anything like that, that would not be a part of it.
No, that would not. It just, it's, it's, we can't accept a policy. We can't adopt a policy that is incomplete. That's my only thing is let's go ahead and put a number in there and
A hundred dollar limit or something like that, since we get sweatshirts or something?
Put a hundred dollars on it.
Cover, cover a coat or jacket or whatever we usually end up getting.
We may need to have Dr. Rob see if that's even a common thing with MSBA if there is.
This would be per year, I would assume? Or per year term? I mean, like, how's?
Generally, I would think it would be done annually. That would be, and usually it's a, I don't know. I'm just speaking out of what I know. But I don't know what they do at school with schools, but it's a per vendor, per amount annually. You know, you don't usually get anything from anybody.
Right.
Would this be better to look into? To see what other schools do?
It should align. I know, like, when we do stuff for schools, like, for, you know, for work, take out a super for lunch, has to be under twenty-five dollars. Can't be more than that's very I think it should match that. I think it makes sense.
Could we maybe just table this and do a little, I can
When we pass the other ones next month?
Yeah, and just push it to next month and
Dr. Rob can ask if maybe they don't need to set it up now. But, you know, I understand what you're saying, but MSBA does for how many districts? Same policy that everybody adopts.
Yeah.
So if anybody else alters that policy, it'd be interesting to know what they want to do or if it's not even a concern.
It's just weird that they put a policy out there that says you have to adopt a amount. There's no amount. It's whatever the board said. So that's, that's why we're talking about it. All right. So
That would be the question. Do these things exist and are not established by the board? That would be the only thing in question if that policy.
That's right.
Yes.
Either take that part out or tell us the amount we
Well, you could strike it.
Recommend us an amount to put in there, right?
You could strike it. Yeah.
I'll move, we table it until next month as we find out for more information.
I got a motion by David.
Second. I'll get it.
All in favor? That's seven oh. Yes, it was. All right, Mr. Tuttle.
I make a motion to move us in executive session on the points of six one zero point zero two one, six one zero point zero two one, thirteen, three and thirteen, including Jason Culpepper, Bridget Best and Nancy Thomas, Ashley Pettigrew and Terry Robinson.
All right, I got a motion by Derek. Second, Kelly, all in favor, or Kelly?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
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 Yes. That's seven oh.